Good evening. Today is Monday, November 18th. This is a regular school community meeting. So people please stand and give congratulations to the board.
I congratulate you. United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to read our school committee's statement. The committee represents the needs of all Leominster Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise a leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Leominster. Having said that, we'll move into our open forum. If you would like to address the committee, please come up to the microphone and state your name and the address for your lecture, please. Again, if anybody would like to address the committee, please step forward. And one last final time, if anybody would like to address the committee, please come forward. With knowing, having no one come forward, we're going to move on to the communications superintendent.
There are no communications this evening?
Okay. How about the superintendent's report then? Yes, tonight we'd like to feature one of our superstar faculty members. So I have Dr. Duzinski here with Mrs. Bello.
I'm not superstar.
Whenever we get an opportunity like this to highlight our staff, it's well received.
So we were honored to have TJ Noviello returned to Leominster High School a few years back. He is our department chair and a good neighbor from what I'm hearing. Our department chair in our science department, and he has revamped our curriculum, provided a lot more energy and excitement across the board, not just in his work in physics, but just in all the sciences. And he was invited recently to speak out in Denver, Colorado, at a national conference highlighting what he's probably going to speak about. And also, we're really honored because he has taken upon himself to kind of set the groundwork going with the program at WPI, which he'll also speak about. As many of you know, the recruitment of science teachers across the nation is very difficult. So when you get a good one, you tend to keep him. So I'll turn it over and let him highlight. He's not real good at promoting himself, but I think we all know what a wonderful job he does for us.
Thank you. So I recently started at WPI, a program that's funded by the National Science Foundation. So my specific role at WPI is known as teacher-in-residence. And as a teacher-in-residence at WPI, which is funded through another coalition called PhysTech, the Physics Teacher Education Coalition, basically addressing the national shortage of physics teachers. So in this country, it's roughly only about 40% of teachers are actually qualified to teach physics. And it's one of the most high-needs fields in all of high school science education. So my job there is to train the physics teachers that are going to be in the future and to also promote science teaching. So I've been going there to basically teach pedagogy courses and to also hopefully graduate five physics teachers per year from WPI. I've also been starting a bridge between Leominster High School and WPI as well, and that bridge is hopefully going to come into a science fair elective course where our students will be able to hopefully work in some labs to get some real-world research experience, and that would be open to all students as well. Because in the past, our science fair has been pretty limited in terms of who can basically participate, and this is supposed to be completely open. So they'll get that experience, they'll get to work with some professors, and hopefully bridge it to other universities nearby as well. So I've been in close communication with the physics department head at WPI, and one of his sons is one of my students I'm training to become a physics teacher as well. So they've been 100% on board between for this bridge. So my talk at Denver is meant to talk about the bridge, bless you, between high schools and colleges, because there really isn't a bridge between K-12 education and higher education. So that's the idea.
Awesome. Congratulations. Congratulations.
I think it goes probably without, well, I'm going to embarrass him probably a little bit. I think anyone that goes into teaching has the gift of the content area. They prepare great lessons, they love Algebra II, they love physics. I think the gift of the man sitting next to me is his relationship, the ability to build relationships. Host a meditation club on Wednesday afternoons and Friday mornings. I announce that every morning. And not a day goes by that, either during his prep period or his duty period, that there's not 10 to 15 students in there getting more physics. And if you could emulate and twin him a few times, that would be great, because he's just a...
So he trains at WPI and brings those science teachers here.
Trust me, we're already planning, which...
That would be fabulous.
It's going to be the theme of the evening, actually. So, yeah, he's, it's a stellar performer. And said he would definitely rake your yard later today. He's a neighbor of Sue Kohler.
So TJ, just please know that we do, we honor you and we're so proud of you, and what you bring to the table, it's a gift to our public schools. So thank you for sharing this with us and with other students coming down the pipe. And the recruitment process, you see what we see, it's very difficult. So if you can give that love of education back to students to want to come and work in urban schools, you will have fulfilled a great need. So congratulations, and you are very much honored by us here in Leominster Public Schools.
And I think it's important to note that TJ is an alumni of Leominster High School.
Very proud of him.
Great job.
I was hoping for great TJ, don't leave. I have got to be another accolade.
Shoveling too, Sue, shovel it.
No, this summer, I have to say, summer school, there would be several science teachers at his house. They're all working together, training. I was so impressed. You know, and I did share that with you, but, you know, really, you definitely live the career of a true dedicated teacher that we need so desperately.
He's a gift.
Really, it's a gift. And, you know, I saw it in the teachers you were mentoring as well, which is great. Good for you.
I thought it was great. Last week, he went to one of his classes and brought some of his students down as well from high school.
Oh, great.
To take a look at WPI and expose them to campus. Yeah, it's great.
All right. That's wonderful. Thanks, TJ.
Thank you for coming out.
So what can we do? I mean, do you have sort of relationships with other teachers in the lower classes that might identify students who really have that gift, who might sort of refer you to them when they reach your grade? I mean, it's like a feeder system we have for sports and everything else, so...
Yeah, correct. So there, yeah, so I've been working with other science teachers too to try to identify students, especially those with language barriers as well. One of the things that I really admire about the English language learner students is that they come into courses and they're not just, if you're taking physics, for example, you're learning a language in and of itself that applies another language, and they're trying to use English as well. It's very hard for them to demonstrate their mastery of the subject field. But when you get to sit in a course, let's say like a science fair course, those boundaries are now gone because it's just an exploration. So I definitely, I've been talking to the ELL teachers especially, to see the students that would be interested in it from that pathway. And also just to explore other kinds of students. There was another kind of student that was in a general physics course that is actually kind of a big YouTube star. He builds Root Goldberg machines. I don't know if anybody knows what those are, but they're just useless devices essentially.
People watch that.
Yeah, people watch that. So that would be an excellent candidate for that too. So we try to maintain constant contact between each other in the science department to identify those kinds of students to take a course like that.
And so you were a student here. So what prompted you? I mean, did you just, did you always have a love of science or math? I mean, was there anything, you didn't just wake up one day or attend a course and all of a sudden it was your favorite?
Yeah, I mean, I liked science. It reached a time in my life, I mean, I wasn't the best high school student in the world. For those that...
Probably got a little bit...
Decided one day I didn't want to live under a bridge. And I really liked physics, so...
He's being a little modest. He left, he works, he's worked at NASA, and there's a component, spiritual component of his, well, if you want to talk about, probably not.
Yeah, when I left for two years, it was Buddhist monks.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah. Hey, that's good. Hey, that all ties into life's experiences, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
There are days that I wish, that's the area I thought. But the thing is, do we have a lot of talent here? I mean, in our schools, these kids are, it's trying to find, identifying them to see where their passion is, or at least where their deep interest is, so they can continue on with it. And that's, I'm sure you're really good at seeing people's talents when it comes to, not just that, but other things as well.
He's inspirational to many, many students.
I think sometimes people need to hear, you have a gift, and that you can use that gift.
Just out of curiosity, in the class that you want to establish where they're doing internships, are you looking for internships just in physics or in any kind of science field?
I would like it to be any kind of science field, any one of them. So I'm trying to open up communications with other departments at WPI as well. So in order for me to recruit students that will eventually become physics teachers, I have to go to other departments, because the physics department at WPI is relatively small compared to most PhysTech schools. So there's not a lot of PhysTech schools, but most of them are like state universities like Bridgewater and down in Virginia. So I do have to reach out to other departments too. So hopefully in that process of reaching out, I can reach out to other departments. Hopefully be able to take on some students every so often.
Okay. So you're looking at the students to, so like, I'm just thinking, my daughter works at a biomedical research company in Worcester, and they do have interns. So, and she's a graduate of Leominster High, she loved physics and tutored physics in college and yada, yada. But in any case, you know, I didn't know that company's near WPI, if that was like a place that you wanted to get...
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, any communications.
Just networking is what I was trying to...
Absolutely, absolutely.
I wrote down here the limited, why you were saying that you noticed that there were some classes or the tracking to the students was limited.
Tracking the students was limited?
Track, no, attracting the students was limited when you bring, when they were bringing the students in, into physics or, what did you mean? What was it, why was it limited? What happened?
I don't, I don't understand your question.
Return, I turned, I limited, I turned to the teaching field.
Oh, to become physics teachers?
Yeah. You said it was limited.
Yeah.
What happened? How did you fight that, or are you still fighting it? Are you getting pushback?
So basically what PhysTech does is trying to put out the notion that, basically, just to give you an example, for me as a physics major, most physics majors don't become physics teachers. And they don't become physics teachers because they believe that there's alternatives that are better paying. That's most of what it is. So a lot of the portions of my job is to let people know basically the benefits of teaching, not just the obvious, you're helping people, but also the compensation is much akin to what you would get in industry. So that's usually the fight we have to have, is the kind of notion that teachers are not well-paid, number one, or well-compensated, and that the rewards of helping others is outweighed in other jobs by the compensation that you get monetarily. If that makes sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, so most, most people who get their degree in physics will end up going into either engineering or academia, perhaps like a professor or something like that, rather than teaching by student.
Okay. Good. Thanks.
Any other questions for TJ?
He's not serving as the chairman of the negotiations today.
No.
You're not laying your groundwork.
Thank you, TJ.
Well, that's good that you chose to, you know, to help other students. And the money factor, you're right, I mean, you can't compare. So it really has to be something that you love, and obviously you came back, so that's a good sign, and it'll be, hopefully you can recruit other people. If not, maybe there's an opportunity for people that have chosen sort of the private world to sort of get them back into, you know, similarly with AIS Company locally, get them in here part, on a part-time basis, so that they're doing a little bit each, if you can't get them full-time. Maybe sometimes companies are interested in helping back, you know, giving back and helping out.
Absolutely.
I don't know. I mean, there might be people that get excited about sharing their knowledge after a while.
And one of the things about bringing our students up to WPI to see that specific program is most people think of WPI as an engineering school exclusively, but it has kind of a growing education field to it as well. So for our students to understand what teaching is too, that we can create more teachers right here at Leominster High School too. So it's not just when they're undergraduates, but hitting them when they're in high school to realize that it is a viable profession for them to think about.
No, I don't think your point can go unnoticed enough, that someone graduated from here and came back. We have a ton, and it makes a huge difference.
What year did you graduate, TJ?
2003.
I remember TJ.
Well, good.
Thank you. Thanks, TJ.
So, Dr. Duzinski, if you could just stay there, because this is a beautiful segue.
It's a great segue.
The early college conversation. The only thing I wanted to do, which I was going to ask, is that, do we have a student report?
We don't. No, and we did. So I'm going to give you the quick.
Okay. Because it would be helpful, we haven't really had a consistent student report this year, so...
Sure. Okay. I do just want to highlight that our boys soccer team is on the road tomorrow night at Springfield Central in the state semifinals after a huge win last week at Doyle against St. John's. Cheerleaders in the finals this Sunday at Shrewsbury High School. Pippin is Friday and Saturday night, get your tickets. And we had a great celebration of our Adams Scholarship winners from our high MCAS score kids. We had 117, the most we've ever had. So we had a great day. On Friday, superintendent was up, and celebrated in the morning. We did a little differently. We had a little breakfast, and they did not know why they were being called to the auditorium. So there was a little mystery around it, and then we all had 117. It was a great day.
Right.
It is a great transition, if I could. Okay. And ironically, last week, we did have a early college meeting. I cannot stress enough the heavy lifting that Malachus Community College and Pittsburgh State University have done for our area in terms of making these programs possible for our kids. There are a couple of programs that may seem somewhat similar, our dual enrollment program. We have a couple of students tonight who have taken dual enrollment courses. And then our early college program through the state, which has been supported very well through, at the state level and through our two local institutions nearby. The interesting piece, which does segue in very nice, we had a great meeting last Friday about this, as we have two pathways right now. We have the liberal arts pathway for early college, and we have a health career pathway. And after a lot of discussion, we kind of looked at each other around the table, as we're also planning a business pathway, and said, what, you know what we don't have? As I looked at Jeremy Roke from Pittsburgh High School, we don't have an education pathway. So we're helping every other industry out there except our own. So that was a good ah-ha moment last, last Friday morning. With us tonight, if you guys do want, would you like them to move off and around? So Fagan Orient from our early college, Kathy Canny.
Drew Goodwin, Train Wu, Shanti Phillips, come on out.
Just as the chair.
In terms of our early college and dual enrollment courses that are either completely free or $30 a course, depending on where you look at, I quickly did some data last week, and I just took $800 as the average cost of a course. We are saving our students in the city of Leominster anywhere between $90,000 and $100,000 this year alone of kids that are taking one, two, three, or four courses to go ahead. They are separate programs, and we are in an early college, and I don't know who's the spokesperson. Yes, you may. You may.
I'm Kathy Canny, I'm the associate vice president for academic affairs at Pittsburgh State. Thanks for giving us a little time tonight to talk about our work with Leominster High School on early college. You'll hear a few minutes from my colleagues as well from the Mount and Pittsburgh State. But in real Greek, Greek terms, early college program means it's a partnership between an institution of higher ed and a high school to provide opportunities to those high school students to explore college and career opportunities while they're still in high school. And so for us, we decided to build a regional approach. Since we have a consortium, we can see that on the slide back there, it's called the North Central Mass Early College Academy. So not only is it Leominster, but it's Pittsburgh High, Gardner High, and Sizer School, and Pittsburgh State and the Mount. So it's a consortium of six partners. We meet regularly on this work. We did go through the process of applying for state designation, which was a very labor-intensive vetting process. Right now, there are only 17 folks who have been designated by the governor and state as official early college programs. And so within those 17 programs, it's probably about 30 high schools, but when you think of over 600 high schools in Massachusetts, it's a big deal. So we're super excited and optimistic about all of the things we can build going forward. And so what we're going to do tonight is tell you a little bit about what's happening now in Leominster, and what we think, what we can add to the program for Leominster High School, and a little bit about the business side of the thing as well. So I'm going to turn it over to my Mount colleagues from Project Healthcare, which is happening now at the Mount, so we'll see a little bit of a better flavor of what's happening with the students at the moment.
All right. Well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Superintendent Deacon, for this opportunity to share with you what we have been doing the last four and a half years. The Mount was awarded a five-year grant, you know, back in 2015, so this is our last year of the grant. It's called the National Workforce Diversity Pipeline. It's funded through the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, Office of Minority Health. There are several goals, objectives within the grant, but the ultimate goal is to increase the number of underrepresented minorities and disadvantaged healthcare providers by, you know, creating the high school to college to career pipeline program. So what we wanted to start off with is the demographic, that's kind of share with you who we're working with. So again, partnering with Pittsburgh High, Leominster High, Leominster CTEI, our charge is really to recruit 120 students starting freshman year and follow them through their first year of college. We have a total of 167 students participating in this program, 110 are students of color, 80 or 50% of low-income, 55 of them are English, not spoken at home, 20 are special education student, and 10, or 6%, are homeless, are Mckendrick-Ventle identified. You can go to the next slide, please.
That's total 167 on all these schools?
Yes.
Okay, three schools.
Yes. So currently, right now, the class of 2019 who just graduated last year, we have 24 students enrolled, you know, at the Mount currently, out of 92 seniors who graduated from last year. Total earned over 1,200 college credits. That's how much we have been able to provide for, for free, or cost for all of these students. Saved over $260,000. 92% have a college GPA of 2.7 or higher, 38 certified nursing assistants, and a majority of them are, that come directly from here. And Shanti is going to highlight what's happening, or what happened here at Leominster High after I finish this slide.
Would you rather we wait for questions, or?
Yeah. You can do that. 18 employed in healthcare field upon high school graduation, 102 students were trained in CPR, first aid, Narcan, and QPR. That's the suicide prevention training. I'm going to turn it over to Shanti, who has been, you know, pretty much the MVP here at Leominster High. We, this is our last year, we actually hired Jaime Rojas. She's unable to be with us tonight, but she's the current academic counselor replacing her, as Shanti is providing academic support for the first-year college student at the Mount. And so she's going to highlight what we've been doing here at Leominster High.
Yeah, so like Train said, I've been at Leominster High for the last four and a half years. And first, I'd say that, you know, having our program come in, the Leominster Public Schools were very welcoming and really worked with us to get this program running and to keep it so successful over the years. So, you know, thank you to the city of Leominster and to Leominster High School. But our project here at Leominster High School, we started with a cohort, both cohorts, their freshman year, so the class of 2019, and then also the class of 2020. So for the first two years, their ninth and 10th grade years, we did career, college, and self-exploration. So they took career assessments, they looked up what they were looking for in a college and the different types of colleges. But then we also did a lot of work around what their values were, what was important to them, so that they could use that when evaluating careers. And coupled with the career assessments, like once a month, we tried to go on a field trip, so we would take them to a college campus, or a hospital, or a career organization, so they could see these careers in action. Along with field trips, we also brought in guest speakers, so people that were working in the field to come in, talk about what they do in their career, but also their journey. Because a lot of the people we tried to bring in were first generation or, you know, low-income people themselves who had been down the road that our students faced. So to hear what they did, you know, can motivate and empower and help the students when they're looking to choose those careers. And then, so for their, that was actually a class they had, an elective class called Healthcare Careers 1 and 2. And the focus was on healthcare careers, but I will say, there were other careers sprinkled in. There's some students through our activities realized, I don't think a healthcare career is for me. So they might have chosen something else, and we definitely still work with them and kind of help them work through that. The last two years of high school, their 11th grade and 12th grade years, were focused on dual enrollment. So we offered college writing, introduction to psychology, human growth and development, introduction to sociology. And we purposely chose those classes because a lot of the selective healthcare fields require those classes. So the choosing of those classes was strategic. So students had the opportunity to take those classes for free, built into their class schedules during the school day. So we brought professors in from the Mount to come and teach the classes two to three times a week. And then the days the professors were not there, I was in the class, helping the students with whatever work was assigned to them. And then senior year, we also had a healthcare career and community service learning class, which is modeled after a class already existing at Leominster High School, where during the last period of the day, students go out and intern at a facility. So we chose healthcare facilities. We had some students at Health Alliance, we had some at Reliant Medical, and we had some at Life Care Center, the nursing home. So students during that last period of the day would go, and they were matched with a staff member to actually get hands-on experience or just be in the environment to see what a career was like. And then over the summers, no break was taken. We offered classes as well. So we had a life science for allied health, we offered statistics, and then a cultural awareness class, which is like a sociology class that students could take at our Mount Leominster campus. So students came, class was like eight to noon, we provided free lunch, and then there were volunteer opportunities for them with the Boys and Girls Club in the afternoon. So it's pretty much in a nutshell, the program that was here at Leominster High. Now, I'm currently advising the 2019 students that are in college. There's a handful of them that are at the Mount, so I keep them face-to-face, and then the others, it's email communication, keeping in touch with them. It's kind of funny, they still ask questions, like, what do I do? Where do I go? But it's nice to be able to still keep in touch with them.
What a wonderful support for them. That's great.
Is there another slide?
I think so. I don't really...
I don't want to get too far.
Oh, the outcome, yes.
Question from the first slide.
So we actually, so we actually worked with the health assisting program through LCTEI. Now, their program, they have a structured program, it's pretty built in. But a few of those students were also able to take advantage of the dual enrollment college courses. And then our program also paid for their CNA testing through the Red Cross for those two classes, 2019 and 2020. And then also same thing, they came to see some of the guest speakers when their schedule allowed. They went on some of the college visits as well, again, when their schedule allowed. So I worked closely with Jean and Sue in those programs to work with that group of students as well. And they were very, very welcoming, again. But this slide is about some of the outcomes we achieved. We had a student who, even going to school out of state, only in Florida, the college took all 15 of her dual enrollment credits. So she, that was a semester, you know, that she stayed there. Outside of the health assisting students, we paid and had four students successfully become CNA-trained. And two of them are working in facilities to pay, help pay for their college costs right now. We also had two students complete EMT training, and one of those students is currently employed as an EMT. He was able to get, gain employment as an EMT right out of high school, and he's talking about going on, pursuing his paramedic, and then possibly even continuing on into nursing. But the hands-on training was very important for him. And then we had, out of our total graduating class, 41 were enrolled in higher education, and then eight are currently working or taking a gap year. But even the ones that didn't go right into college right away, like... But even the ones that didn't go right into college right away, like, for example, one student is in Japan. She took a gap year in Japan. Her brother's in the military, so she went over with him, and he was able to get her a job. Another one wanted to kind of volunteer in the health field to really make sure it's what she wanted to do. So even the ones that didn't go right into college still had a plan in place. So we actually have two students here tonight that participated in the program. If you want to come up and say a few words, we have Monica and Lisa.
I don't know if you just want to share, you know, maybe how the program helped you, or what you thought of the program, I'll share whatever it is.
Yeah, I appreciate the dual enrollment program a lot, and especially what Shanti does, because it exposes you to the college environment. And as a minority, many of us don't think that we'll even make it through high school, let alone get into college. And it sets you up for the real world and what it would be like to have a college professor. And it's very direct, there's no beating around the bush when it comes to the college classes. You get your syllabus at the very first day, there's no introduction or playing name games. And it has what your classes are, the assignments that do, when the due dates are, and there's no reminders, or did you do your homework, or don't forget that you have homework. They really don't hold your hand through it all, and it's really eye-opening.
I'm Lisa Naglinda, and I took interest speech at Pittsburgh State. And I also took, I'm currently taking college writing one right here. And I'm pretty sure it's sponsored by the Mount, yeah, Project Healthcare. And when I took interest in speech, I noticed that it was a different vibe, because I took it as a sophomore. So sophomore, I was like fresh, basically fresh out of middle school. I was used to that, holding hands and like helping me out. But as soon as I arrived there, it was a different atmosphere that I was not ready for at all. But throughout the semester, and when I finished it, I was, at the end, I felt like this benefited me. And I also told my other friends at Leominster High School right now to take more dual enrollments, because I personally benefited from the hardcore assessments. And as she said, they don't baby you around, they make sure, they don't make sure that you did your assignments, but they want you, well, as I was taking it, they wanted me to make sure that I knew that this was a college course, and that they're not going to take me as a high school student as an excuse. And when I'm currently taking college writing one right now with a different professor, and it's basically the same atmosphere, and I feel like this is really important for all high school students to experience this. And also, I am actually getting free college credits, and who doesn't want free college credits? I'm not paying for single credits. I think it's actually very like that. Like, you're going on to college with free credits, you're saving money, a lot of money with that.
That's why we brought you forward.
I am really grateful for that.
Yeah, but now the secret's open.
I'm very grateful for that, so, yeah.
That's huge. That's brilliant.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're a very remarkable gentleman. So we wish you luck. So if you could flip to the next slide, I just kind of want to bring you into where we're at right now and where we're headed a little bit, as well as kind of some of the underpinnings. Oh, Train, you still have one more.
That was just a breakdown of, so, the class of 2020, the seniors now, we currently have 32 students taking dual enrollment, completing 45 credits, and they've, in progress, they've already completed 161 credits. And according to Mount tuition rates, that's almost $45,000 saved. And then the class of 2019 is on the bottom, so they had almost, they had $73,000 saved, and they completed 339 credits. And I will just say, that was just our Project Healthcare students here, which, I think I have at Leominster High like 90-something students total. But there are also, the classes are open up to the entire high school, so it's not just Project Healthcare students in the classroom. So those numbers are even higher, because each class, I'd say averages about 25 to 27 students, so.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So the work that Train and Shanti and the Project Healthcare team have done for the last four and a half years really helps to provide us, Pittsburgh State and Mount Watch Uset, with some really good examples of how this is done well. Making sure that we are really reaching out to an audience of students that is not just the students who already know that they're going to college. This is really about equitable access. This is absolutely a social justice issue. And so there are five requirements of the early college designation that Kathy mentioned earlier. Equitable access is the first one. They need to make sure that our early college programs are reaching students who are first-generation, low-income, underrepresented in higher education in general, and also those middle achievers, the students who are just kind of floating and not really sure of what their plan is. Those are the ones we want to make sure we get into a pipeline, into a pathway, so that there is an opportunity for those students to get a sense of community, and belonging, and feeling like college genuinely is an option for them. That is incredibly important. Academic pathways is another requirement. So there has to be pathways that are aligned with college degree programs and careers, and also meet the high school graduation requirements. So when we do course selection, we actually have kind of a three-way map that happens. We have your high school graduation requirements, we have the degree requirements, and then we have the Massachusetts transfer block. And we really look at courses across all three of those different maps, so that we can make sure that when a student takes a psych course, even if they decide not to be in a healthcare career, and they want to bring it over to a business career, that those credits are going to go with them. And courses like that, all of the publics will accept those credits, many of the private will also accept them. Not all of them, but many of them. We have to have robust student supports, tutoring, orientation, staff support. We have United Way Youth Venture here as well, which helps to support some of the social and emotional learning components for students. Connections to career, so workplace and experiential learning opportunities, those visits that these guys referenced, the speakers that come in, really firsthand exposure to what the many different careers are. I know when I was entering high school and thinking about, I wasn't thinking about careers, but there was like doctor, nurse, firefighter, and not a whole lot else than that. You know, so it really opens up, within the field of healthcare, there are hundreds of different careers. Let's look through those and see what feels like it might align with your personal interests, passions, and skills. And high-quality deep partnerships. So we have the Mount, Pittsburgh State, Pittsburgh High, Leominster High, and CTEI, Gardner High, and Kaiser School as part of this regional concept. And it's a regional concept on purpose. When we looked at the data for our students, we realized, and first we realized it just from talking to our counselors in schools, students would disappear at one district and pop up at another. And this is, the transience within our community is absolutely tremendous. And so, and yet they stayed within North Central Mass. And so we realized that we needed to have a program that would support those students when they left Leominster and showed up in Pittsburgh, when they leave Gardner and show up in Leominster, and that they can be able to continue on an early college pathway, even when life pulls the rug out from underneath them. And so conceptually, you see kind of a, can you just go back once? I'm sorry.
I am on my back, are you kidding?
If you can't, it's okay, I can, there you go. On the left-hand side, you see kind of that funnel design, right? So ninth and 10th grade, you're starting really broad with some career exploration, narrowing it down by 11th grade to select a pathway, taking those courses in 11th and 12th grade that will really put you on a career pathway, and then building in some micro-credential opportunities like CNA, like EMT, to be able to start earning some money and making some networking connections in the fields that they're interested in. You know, it's a really, really important thing for our students, especially when we were looking at students who are underrepresented in higher ed. Life happens, there are frequently times where these students need to stop out for a reason. This will make sure that there's some sustainable income in their field of choice when that happens, and then they can come back in, matriculate to the Mount, matriculate to Pittsburgh State, and then go abroad again. You know, and really, maybe you don't want to be a CNA for the next 20 years, but maybe you do want to become a nurse and be able to really explore that. So conceptually, that is what we were looking at. We can go to the next one now, I'm sorry. So why are we doing this? As I mentioned, accessibility for all students. This is very much an intentional move to start looking and changing our systems, so that we're supporting students who haven't been making it to higher ed. Real-world applications that come from dual enrollment courses, work ethic, formation of time management skills, that syllabus piece that she talked about, that's real. That is real. Sharpening writing skills and developing critical and creative thinking skills are systemically what typically happen in college courses. The cost savings is absolutely no joke. So for the graduating class of 2018, right now, the average loan debt is just shy of $30,000. And parent-plus loans for those students is at $35,000. We're shaving a semester, two semesters, sometimes even more off of that for students. And in addition, they're going to be able to enter the workforce earlier, which will ramp up their earning opportunities moving forward. And this is about pathways to success for youth here in North Central. So what PJ was speaking to, you know, to be able to make sure that there is an educational pathway, that we are recruiting students who want to stay here and stay with their families, to be able to have fruitful careers, and to be engaged in their communities as So in deciding the Leominster pathways, we did this in a couple of different ways. We met, thanks to Principal Dubcinski, we had the opportunity to meet with the department chairs and really sit down and have a good conversation after talking, after presenting it professional day, about what pathways really make sense for Leominster. And we also looked at labor market data, so that we could make sure that the pathways that we're going to offer are going to be supported in the future. So healthcare, given the increase that we've seen, is a no-brainer, right? Business was very much in the forefront of every single department chair that we spoke with, conversation. Partially not because they're going to be necessarily running their own businesses, but those side gigs, the side hustles that are so important for so many of our students now, and many adults as well. Liberal arts and sciences and education coming in fall of 2020, thank you, Pittsburgh State. And so that was a multi-tiered process to be able to do it, but conversations with those department chairs was really key in that, in that moment. Next slide.
Question of funding. I'm glad I got this one. So much of the consortium work that's been done to date has been building on existing programs that are coming out of Mount Watch Uset, coming out of Pittsburgh University, and working in partnerships here and there. The reality is that it is currently a patchwork of different funding streams, very often grant funding, some institutional funding from the community college and the university. And that actually presents some structural challenges to this consortium kind of coming to full fruition. Realistically, the central concept of having structured programs and well in advance, pathways that are clearly defined and clearly available to a broad swath of students to address the issue of equitable access, is difficult to actually maintain when the funding that makes the program work can change from year to year, and sometimes more frequently than that. The reality of the state funding picture currently is that we have a difficult time running courses in the fall, because oftentimes, much of the structural funding to fund the actual courses isn't announced till the second or third week of September. And that's the reality of some of this work. And I would say institutionally, the Mount and Pittsburgh State have really committed funds from their coffers to make some of that work. But at the end of the day, to bring this to scale that the consortium envisions, sustainable funding is something that has to be, I would say, jointly developed. At the state level right now, there is some talk of developing this or including it into per student yearly reimbursements as a mechanism to fund it. I would say that is very much up in the air, very much in the hands of the legislature, but that will be the path that it goes. There has been, I would say, movement at the state level between, through the Executive Office of Education, the DHE, and the DESE, the Department of Highway, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary, are working together in a cooperative way that I think is unique, and certainly not something many folks in education are accustomed to, where they're really breaking down silos to have some conversations about how that mechanism for funding is determined and how it will roll out. But one of the things we always want to, and I would say we don't remind students, because for students, we just pitch and say, free college, you know? Thumbs up, it's a great deal. But the reality is, it's not free college. It is college that is very purposefully provided at no cost to students and their families. And there are costs institutionally to run these courses. The courses generally cost the institution running them, depending on the course, that's one of the variables, on average about $7,000, $7,500 at the most bare-bones level. And again, that's an average, some courses are considerably more expensive, depending on some of the resources that are required. To date, what we've done, much of it has been based on what grant funding is available in any given semester. But as I said, that really limits the availability and kind of the consistency of what models can be provided, when grant funding ends or when grant funding is not available, to have it at full scale. And one of the realities of working with grants is that the population that a grant serves most often is very narrow, very specified, and very limited. And it's not something where we said, all students at Leominster High School, or all students in the consortium can have access to a specific course. Most often, it's much more narrowly aligned. So part of the work of what the consortium is doing is developing a strategy, first off to kind of seek consistent funding for this, but also to see what can be developed in terms of prior foundation funding. So I would say that is a large part of our work, and we really are seeking school committees as allies in that development of an overall long-term strategic funding strategy to make this consortium work, something that can be sustained for the long term.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? I know you just did.
So if you go back to the first slide, can you do that? That's why I wanted to ask that.
Sorry, I answered.
It's not really going backwards, it's just revolving back to the... One more. So out of the 24 enrolled full-time students, are most of them getting loans to, I mean, at that point, are they getting loans to, how are they financing that full-time?
Are students that graduate, when they go on?
Yes. So they're borrowing the money from?
Yeah, financially, some of them are eligible for grants, given their income level, but if they don't meet that, then yes.
And then, how much, so this is the fifth year of a five-year grant?
Yes.
And then, so how much was the total grant?
$450,000 a year.
$450,000 a year?
Correct, to serve Pittsburgh and Leominster.
And so then, this is the last year, and so what happens at the end of 2020?
That's probably what we're working on.
So that's, so I mean, so there's some, I mean, obviously, there's some gain here for the college, because it's a good way of getting a student to maybe enroll full-time, right? I mean, so colleges across the country are looking for, you know, how am I going to get my next, you know, where are my next students going to come from? So this is a good way to sort of introduce them into, students that you heard a couple minutes ago never thought they could go to college, whether it's community college or a four-year college. So that's a, that's a good thing. But at the same time, just looking back, one of the programs that we have here at CTEI was the, in the old days, mold-making was a real art, mold-making for the plastic industry. And so now we have CNC machines, and, you know, it's getting a lot fancier. But that was a real consortium of local businesses that were running out of 80-year-old mold-makers, they didn't want to let leave because they had nobody else coming in to take it over. So it was a combination, I think this is the best model that I've seen still, is that it was a combination of those business owners who had skin in the game, because they needed mold-makers, and our education system, and a combination of the two really made it the success. They weren't great at maybe putting it down into structure, didn't have any pamphlets or curriculum spelled out specifically, but it really has grown to, I think we have a really, one of the best programs here, and one of the first programs. I don't think anybody around the country knew what a CNC machine was, and we already have one here. I mean, that's, that's pretty dynamic. So I would say, it looks like you follow the students through, so you have the data to continue to do that, that's important. But I think more federal and state money's coming this way, because I think this is the model they want to use pretty much everything, is expose the students to a whole slew of things, as you said, firefighter, you know, we have a police officer, you know, the lawyer would come in, have a teacher come in, and that would be it. Those are your five selections. So this is what, and if you were a student, shrugging your shoulders, saying, well, I don't want to be any of those things, you were out of luck, because there was no way of getting exposed to those things. So I guess my question would be, how successful are you? This is a big healthcare industry. This Worcester County and North Worcester County, huge, and the state in healthcare, they need healthcare workers. they need healthcare workers. So have you had conversations with them? Are they ready to step up to the plate and provide some funding? Because, you know, back to when the moldmakers, you know, the companies needed people, they had to do something, and they, you know, they ponied out, they stepped up to the plate. How willing are they to put up some of this $400,000 you need a year to run this program?
Yeah, that's part of our next, a lot of our next steps work is with the workforce. So they are aware, we are talking to them, we had an all-day summit not that long ago. The purpose of that was to educate the workforce about what this is doing and how it will actually provide skilled workers for them. And you're right, it needs to be, we're doing this work to help provide skilled workers for them, so they'll be able to partner with us and put some money into that as well. And I think that's all coming. There's a lot of state attention, there's a lot of national attention, and there's a lot of private funders out there who are understanding that this is a vehicle to, I mean, 65% of the jobs now need some kind of post-secondary education.
Right.
So, and if we're not, they have to help us do that. So that's where we need to start digging in further, is to get some, we have been talking to companies, but we need to get more serious about getting them to partner in a more authentic way.
Because this is really their best way to get employees. And as you said, you may expose the student to it, says, not my gig, I want to go do something else, that's fine, they have other options. But you may find, and I think a lot of the, and I have no data to prove it, but a lot of the students I have talked to that were CNAs go off to be nurses. And I don't know how you measure that, if anybody has the data, the state has it or the federal government, but that's, I think it probably starts with, you know, programs like this, and the old days of candy striping and those kind of things that lead people into the fashion business. But, you know, you can look towards community development block grants, Leominster, Pittsburgh gets them, we're entitled to community, so we get it direct. There's not a whole lot of money there, but there's some, and it does, it's applicable to what you're doing here. But it's really the industry that you've got to have a conversation with. In the meantime, because if you've got a gap there between future funding from what might happen, I mean, to close the program down, it's probably not a good thing, as you made it so far. But I would assume that the reason they gave you the funding is at the end, either we or the industry is going to help provide most of the funding. Isn't, I mean, that's like seed money, get the program running. So I think, you know, the industry's got to have a serious conversation amongst themselves, I mean, doing all the work for them. And you're creating employees for them. I mean, that's, this is a great feeder system for them, so I think, you know, if they can't come up, and this whole county can't come up with...
Dean, there's other people who have questions, so I can just move on. You had some very good points. Nona and then Ron.
Okay. How do you reach, I like the fact that you go after students who may not think they are going to go to college, but how do you really reach them? What do you, what's happening here at Leominster High to reach those students? Because I envision that someone comes into high school and they, they have it in their head, they're not going to go on, they don't have the resources at home, they don't have the support at home to go on to college. So they kind of just kind of float through high school and just kind of just graduate and, you know?
Correct. You're absolutely right.
Yeah.
So we've talked, we've actually talked, as the four principals that are taking part in this, we are going into the eighth grades this year, and we're going to start this program. We're losing our rock star, gifted as PJ was, so it's this quiet one over here that's there that has been unbelievable for us. But the recruitment process, presenting the programs, having a parent night for them to come in, in dual languages, because I think sometimes that's another issue for us. We're very lucky that Jasmine Rosado, who is our new guidance counselor, is bilingual, and she, we've met, and she's also the liaison for our early college. So the recruitment is beginning, and really much stronger than I think we've had in the past.
That's great.
Can I just layer into that real quickly? We have trio programs here, federally funded trio programs. So we have staff who are here in the high school almost every day, sometimes a few times a week, whose job it is to outreach to students who are first-generation and low-income, and to really make sure that they are connected to every single opportunity, that they have lots of college tours, lots of experiences. And so we're able to really work with those programs to make sure that this is an opportunity that's included in that wider range of things.
You know, it is cyclical, because these, those two girls that took the college course, their success rate of going to college now and finishing college is much higher.
I know, that's true. And I just have one other question. Shante, did you work in another program before you came to this program?
I did. I was here in like 2010, 2011.
Project Co.
Yes, with the trio ETS program.
I remember you. Do we still have Project Co? Because that kind of fits into, fits into this.
That's a trio program. We call it trio.
Okay, very good. Okay, I thought I referenced that. Ron?
Now, I'm sitting here and I'm, to paraphrase Dean's statement, I do have some skin in this, because, you know, you guys are talking about going to the eighth grade or this and that. But, you know, I didn't know what I, I didn't know what I wanted to be. I still don't know what I want to be. I'm a nurse, I'm an RN. But when I was in high school, grammar school, high school, if you would have told me I'd graduated high school, I was going to be a nurse, I would have totally, you know, you've been smoking. But I had an epiphany in the Army. I was forced to be a medic against my will. I was forced to look at things. And then I came back and it said I had to go back to school, much against my will. I went to school here, Ed Lumsen Trade School, and I got a little note here, what's the age limit? Because as I said two weeks ago at the last school committee meeting, the elephant in the room is the kids who graduate in high school, they go out there, and all of a sudden they find out there's more than just what's the Eiffel Tower. And, you know, those two kids that came, I'm glad they came, because yes, it's funding, as you were saying, but there was an article in the Globe two days ago about when the kids go to college, there's a lot of money they've got to spend, money that we don't talk about, money for books. And that's the other part of the picture, you know, you talk about debts for the students. What if the student doesn't have any money to spend? And they start sliding cutting classes, or taking classes that only meets within their budget, and then they pin them on the degrees. So I'm sitting here, I'm trying to figure out, how do I ask you guys, you know, you said this project's going to be ending another, you know, next year, 2020, but healthcare is more than just working in a hospital or in a rest home. There's a lot of avenues for healthcare in nursing. Yes, I'm happy for CNAs, yes, I'm happy for paramedics and EMTs, but nursing by and large, sometimes I feel has been given a short shrift. Because we were talking earlier, you, Chris, and also, and...
Me?
Yes. About intellectual properties. Because everything that we're learning, everything that is being taught is part of the intellectual realm, and it costs money. Whether you're making money or not making money when you don't, when you get out of school, it has some relevance, because you still have to learn how to eat, or what, put something on the table.
Great. So Ron, do you have a specific question?
I know, I know, I know. My question is, what, my question for you, to piggyback on to Dean, with healthcare, health, it's not just healthcare provider, healthcare workers, what others, what can you make it more conscious? Because look at me, I'm in the eighth, I'm in the eighth grade. How are you going to tell me what I want to be when I grow up? I don't know. I still don't know what I want to be when I grow up. Do you?
But I think the exposure that we're giving kids right now, which is why they're selected courses that are cross, across several disciplines, the introductory courses. And I think it's just as important, as Shante said, for that kid that says, I'm going to go into nursing, I'm going to go to healthcare, take three courses and go, whoa, that's not, I'd much rather they learned that here.
Those two kids, those two kids, I wish you could hear, those kids would talk more, because they're telling you what happens when the, when the rubber hits the asphalt. I wish they could have told us, I couldn't listen to them forever, because that's the truth of going to school. You have to make some damn choice as a student. That's the problem.
So Mike?
I've got a couple of questions. The first two years before, that's ninth to tenth grade, that's before dual enrollment. So do those classes happen in their high schools? Who teaches those?
Yes. I taught the elective class, it was career exploration. So that was an actual class in their schedule that they came to every day.
So, and then you're paid out of the grant?
Yes.
All right, so...
Yeah, so I come to Leominster High every day, but I'm employed by the Mount through the grant.
Okay.
Part of the model that we're working on currently is build capacity for guidance counselors and teachers within the high school to be able to offer those services. They do a tremendous job already, but kind of to align them and bring some consistency across the different districts, so that a big piece of the career college exploration for this model's work really relies on the district staff.
And then the dual enrollment classes, I think I saw on the slide that the Mount ones were offered at the Leamont-Sleminster campuses. Were all of them, or?
They were here. The summer, yeah. The summer was...
The summer they were there. Oh, so during school year, they were here.
They're here, embedded within the...
Pittsburgh State ones, are they here as well?
The scheduling pieces manage differently depending on the university and the district. So for Leominster, we did a hybrid, where some of it was delivered on campus and they appear at the high school, and then we came up to campus for some field trips and some lab work. And then when we work with Sizer, because we're geographically close, Sizer kids come to the university for all their classes. So it's not the same for every one.
In terms of scheduling, right, issue that we...
And then the dual enrollment classes are being taught by Pittsburgh State and Mount faculty, or?
Correct, yes.
Okay. That's my question.
All right, Sue. So when we talk about equitable access, do you accept or attract students that have disabilities, like on 504s?
We do.
We do.
We do.
What percentage? I didn't see it in the...
If you go back one day, it was...
Or around.
Maybe you could break down some.
Twenty or 12%.
12%.
12%. And that may actually be a little bit higher. Like I said, this is just strictly the project healthcare students, but the classes here are filled with other students that are outside of project healthcare as well, and I know a few of them have 504s or IEPs.
We hover between, right around 20 to 25% overall for all of our duly-enrolled courses for students with IEPs.
I think I would be remiss if I didn't thank Superintendent Maurice Apoloff for coming on board, Renee, Jenny, everyone in the district, Dr. Riley, who has been a cheerleader and a huge advocate for this, and the heavy lifting that the Mount, and when they say that they vetted this over a couple of years, the application process was tweaked about 25 times, and the emails that went back and forth. The partnership is among the best in the state, if not the best in the state.
We have a wonderful opportunity for our students, and we really appreciate that. That's awesome. It's fantastic.
I would like to, I know there's enough time here, but I would like to, if we could meet offline at some point with somebody, just because I hate to see this program end.
It'd be great.
And I'd like to know what other programs that were awarded money are doing in terms of transitioning into a more permanent funding. And again, I think it's up to us, if we're really serious about this, we're going to have to step up to the plate, people in the industry are. It can't just be a grant, it's really nice, and we all say wonderful things here, but then we let it just go by the wayside. When it's proven to be, you're dealing with the toughest situations that there are, and you're making real good things out of things that some of these kids might, you heard it, they might never have been exposed to this ever in their lifetime. That's what the program is supposed to do. So what about Mass Hire? Are you connected with them at all? Mass Hire?
Not yet.
Jeff Broberg.
I felt for Dean to join the group.
Maybe, maybe, maybe you could get ahold of me. I'd like to be helpful to you, if there's a way I could be, because this is exactly, this is the trend. This is, this is for every occupation, okay, for every field, every interest, exposing students to different areas, finding which ones they are interested in, and then carrying out programs. I mean, so I hate to see the program end, I mean, that sounds like that's what might happen if you don't get the funding.
We appreciate everyone coming.
Thank you very much.
We're going to move on to the Flack Capital Reserve Fund. So we have Mr. Richard Murphy with us this evening, he's the executive director from Flack, and he is here to talk about a capital reserve fund.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for letting me come tonight. And just sitting and listening to that, I mean, the opportunities you're offering your students are just great, and it's wonderful to see them growing like that. I wish I had a decent physics teacher. So the fact that you're trying to get people to go into that, more power to you, it's great. I am not here to ask for any money tonight. Basically, what I'm asking is that you let us keep some of the money that we actually are making. I think that, I noticed in your packet that you have most of the information. Basically, what I'm here to ask you to do tonight is to vote to allow us to create a capital reserve fund. So I'm here to answer any questions that you might have about the capital reserve fund. I think most of you are probably familiar with Flack. The L, the first L in Flack is Leominster, so it is your collaborative. We serve your students and students from about 20 other school districts in the region. We have 11 member districts. We go from about Air all the way out to Hardwick. So we're pretty big geographically. We serve, as I said, students mainly from our member districts, but we also have students from, that are non-member district students. So we are at the point where we can actually establish a capital reserve fund. Several years ago, the state decided to cap the amount of money that collaborators could keep in their fund balance at 25% of our operating. So I think most of you probably realize that we have to generate income at the organization in order to continue to function. And we have been aiming at that 25% for about 15 years. And we reached it last year. Because of the cap, and because we did not have a capital reserve fund, we had no other choice than to give the money back to our member district. So we actually gave all of our member districts money back last year. There is a formula for doing that in our collaborative agreement, and it's based on the usage of each of the individual districts over the previous three years. So we wound up giving money back. What I'm asking this year is that you allow us, if we do exceed that 25% cap, which we expect to this year, we are asking that you allow us to keep 75% of the money that we make as surplus funds. 25% will still go back to all of the member districts, each of the member districts, based on the formula in our collaborative agreement. And we did share this with the board at a board meeting on August 22. Our entire board voted to support the establishment of this capital fund. However, the state requires that we get two-thirds of our school committees to go along with it. We do have a capital plan to go with the capital fund. Right now, the capital plan calls for transportation. One of the reasons that we want to have increased transportation in all of our programs, but particularly one of our programs, is that our students, we want our students to be able to take advantage of more community and vocational options. Probably you know that our Caldwell Alternative School relocated this year over to 98 avenue streets here in Leominster. So we're very happy to be there, it's a beautiful facility. We built out half of it, half of it had already been the Leominster Center for Excellence. But one of the opportunities that came up for us, because we are so close here in Leominster now, was opportunities for our students to attend programs here. And I really want to thank you all, and I want to thank the administration here at the high school for being so cooperative. This semester, we have begun to bring students over here to explore vocational opportunities. So the students have been starting to come over here. One of the things that we want to use the vans for if we are to get them, which we plan on getting them this year and next year, and in the next three years after that, is to bring students back and forth here to the Leominster Center for Technical Education. We also have two other programs. We have a program located out in Townsend that has never had transportation for their students, it's a K-7 program at the Swannacook School for children with emotional behavioral issues. Those children, when we do take field trips with those students, the few times that we've done it, the big yellow bus, taking 45 of those students on one big yellow bus has proven challenging over the last few years. We also run a program, or a series of programs out in the public schools. We have programs in Shirley, Air, Clinton, and... in Shirley, Air, Clinton, and at North Middlesex. Those students, we have two vans right now that are nine years old. We'd like to replace those vans with one wheelchair van and one passenger van that we use for that program. So we'd like to offer those students more opportunities. Right now, that's what we've planned on doing with any funds from the capital fund. The board will approve. They've already approved this particular capital plan. If we were to change the capital plans in the future, we'd have to get our board approval for that, and then we have to come back and get approval from you folks as well. It's a possibility that in the future, you know, it could be four, five years down the road, six years down the road, that we look at either major renovations in any of our facilities, or the possibility of buying someplace. Right now, Flack doesn't own anything. We lease. My vision has always been, wouldn't it be great someday if we had our own building with our own administrative offices, our own professional development center? I don't know if that'll ever come to be, but that's another possibility. Another thing that we're looking at, we have some space that we're looking to develop over at Ninety-Eight Adam Street. It could be that we're looking at funding for, we had a shop that we moved over with us, a wood shop, but we realized that wood shop may be somewhat limiting. It's possible that we want to expand and buy equipment, computer-aided design-type things, robotics, lab, whatever. So it could be that two or three years from now, my successor may be coming before this board and say, we'd like to change the capital plan to purchase additional vocational-related equipment. So I'm here tonight, there is a motion in the materials that I sent you to allow the Flack Collaborative to establish a capital reserve fund, as approved by the Flack Executive Board of Directors on August 22nd, 2019. I'm here this evening to ask for your support for that motion.
Does anybody have any questions?
So, I did get a chance to sort a facility. I think you're better off before buying another building, make use of that, and then potentially down the road, maybe there's an opportunity to condominiumize that location. I'm not the owner, but maybe that's your chance to own a piece of property, rather than all the other expenses that come with us. We have multi-million dollars' worth of capital here that we're, you know, constantly maintaining. But the only thing that I would request is that if they, if your successor ever did get into another shop or another vocation, that they work with our schools, because there are a few vocations that we can't offer, we don't have space.
Sure.
So rather than seeing you get into something, so you may leave, and then somebody may have this idea of, we have to jump into, I don't know, what the vocation might be, when we already offer that, but we're limited as to what we can offer, and you're right down the street.
Absolutely.
So if you can make that part of, I don't know how you convert that into this, but it would be really nice if there was something in there that said that, you know, that Flack would work with our school system in terms of determining, just have a conversation about need.
Absolutely. And Superintendent Deacon and I have had these conversations already, and there are a lot of opportunities for that. And thankfully, you actually gave me some information on the workforce development, and they actually indicated several months ago that they had some federal money that would be available, particularly for special education vocational. So we would be willing to follow up on any of those types of leads, but we will certainly continue to work with Le Monster and any other possible funding sources. So, yes, we would be very excited about that.
Any other questions? And if not, I made a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the, to grant permission to create a capital reserve fund, and just in there, as, if you can put a sentence in there, I'm not sure how you want to word it, leave it to the superintendent, but something you both can come up with. That way, if you're not here and the rest of us have gone down the road, we don't have another program that replicates ours that's really not needed. That's all.
What is this, changing the capital plan required you to come back?
So right now, it's just the budget.
Right now, it's the same, doesn't it? Just a little sentence, a little reference.
Sue, a second it. Ron, did you have a question, or?
I just had a question. How much money are we talking about?
Well, it's seventy-five percent of...
I can tell you what, we gave back last year to Le Monster, well, to all of our school districts, actually. We gave $136,000 last year. Twenty thousand, three hundred and forty of that went to Le Monster. It can vary from year to year. This is only the, last year was only the first year that we actually had enough money to do that. It can vary from year to year, depending on our enrollment numbers and the number of students that come from a non-member district.
And it's capped in here about the total amount.
Yes.
Yeah, I saw the cap, but I was just wondering how much money are we talking about?
Excellent. So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
We'll enjoy your retirement. He's retiring this December.
Oh, well, thank you so much for all your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. That move down there was the perfect spot.
It was. Thank you very much.
Good job.
It worked out great for us, and we appreciate your support.
I'm happy to have you there.
Thank you.
So we're gonna move on to the MASC conference report. There's a number of us who attended various workshops and open sessions, so we just wanted to have people give a brief, sort of overcap of what they went to. Why don't we start with you, Nona?
Okay. I attended workshops on just Thursday. I was able to go on Thursday only, and the first workshop I attended was called Pursuing Culturally Responsive Substance Use Prevention Resources. And it was an organization called Project Here, which is a free program funded by the Mass Office of the Attorney General and the GE Foundation, and it brings, is bringing substance use prevention education resources to educators in public middle schools across the state. The facilitator presented ways that Project Here has adopted a culturally revitalizing approach to youth substance use prevention in mass by reducing barriers to access, adopting inclusive language, and valuing the voices of educators and students. And I'd like to pass out a handout that they gave us. When you get these, you can look, and there's some extra for the others that they own. It's a tree, and it's broken down into three parts. The first part is called surface culture, and this is, this is each individual. You have surface cultures that, easy to change, easy to do things, such as hairstyle, or holidays, or cooking, that type of thing. The middle part is shallow culture, unspoken rules, high emotional impact on trust, and those include, like, being honest, or theories of wellness and disease, child-rearing principle. These are things that people, you can, you can change these, but you have to work at these. And then the final one, where the roots are, this is deep culture, and it's collective unconscious beliefs and norms, intense emotional, and impact on trust. And these are the hardest to change in individuals. And this is where this group is working to try to influence students in the middle eight, middle schools to be able to look and structure their culture, that they can grow their culture. And I, I think it could have been a longer workshop than what it was, but, you know, it was good. The other one I attended was music integration to promote social-emotional learning, literacy, and math skills in early childhood, pre-K to third-grade population. And this, music integration programs that Horizons for the Homeless Children and Gardner Pilot Academy are using this to teach early math and literacy skills, and build confidence, self-regulation, and other social-emotional competencies in young learners. And they teach parents and teachers can use music to build connections and positively manage behavior. And they talked about how some of the kids in their programs have challenges in behavior, and if they come in and they, and they sit down on the floor and they do some music things to begin with, and incorporate music the whole day long in their, in their learning, it just relaxes them. It takes their edge off of learning. And they, they have, we have STEM, they have STEAM. They put the M in to have, the A in to have arts, and there's, I'll pass these out too. These are six reasons why every child needs the arts. And it talks about how, and they've been, and they've proven this, that test scores are better, kids participate in more community service, report, and they report less boredom in the schools. And just one of the, we did several things in the workshop. We sang a lot of songs, and we did, like, kids, young kids like to hear their name. They like to say hello, and I'm so-and-so, and they did it, they broke it up with beats of music. So, like, I would be no, nah. And they pounded out, and they said, hi, no, nah. And they go on to the next person, and that person would have to pound, pound out their syllable. And they do it through musical instruments. They do it through body expression, touching, like touching their shoulders and touching their knees. It was really fascinating, and I thought it was well worth knowing that the arts contribute from early childhood right up through high school.
Thank you, Nona. Sue?
Okay. So I attended Seventy Minutes on Chapter Seventy. And it was interesting. So, a little, a little-known fact, the foundation budget is intended to be funded with fifty-nine percent local funding and forty-one percent state funding. Of course, we don't know if it's not, but, so anyway, our state representative came before us at the last meeting and mentioned about the Student Opportunity Act that's been passed. And so basically, it went through the detail of that. I think the important takeaway, at least for me, was that there's no money attached to it. So even though it's a seven-year rollout, and we anticipate an increase, it's not a revenue bill. But some of the things that, you know, the key items that have been adopted based on the recommendation of the Foundation Budget Review Commission, health insurance, they're looking at adjusting the health insurance to be in line with the average of the GIC. That makes sense, you know, because everybody's paying different health insurances. Every retired health insurance to the foundation budget. Calculate health insurance inflation separately from inflation of the rest of the budget. Makes sense. English-language learners, make E, L, L an increment added to the base rate per pupil. So what that's saying is, you know, everybody, we started at base, and then if you, you know, if you're have a disability, that's another level, you know, if you're a trade student, that's another level. So they're saying to make that an increment as well. The Budget Review Commission recommends establishment of a committee to improve data reporting, which I believe we're doing, specifically around reporting reviews of funding at a school level. Some of the things that were recognized in the budget review but not recommended were early childhood education, and they skipped inflation, which is another flat hole. But the good news is, the Student Opportunity Act was adopted, and the bad news is, special education will still exceed actual spending by seven hundred million a year, which is, so again, that's still gonna be underfunded. We'll see a minimum per pupil increase of thirty dollars per year, starting above the prior year's Chapter Seventy-Eight. So that's, no community will get less aid than they got last year for next year, so that's a good thing. They're also going to, okay, and the other big thing is that at a district, special ed transportation will be included in the circuit breaker. We fought years on that at the MASC level for special education, and they couldn't do it. So this year, it's kind of nice that they are gonna build that in. And the other thing is, the, they're gonna, the Mass School Building Authority, they're gonna lift the cap on that to eight hundred million, where it was seven hundred and fifty million. So that's a good thing. Anything like that is good.
So did they mention on the, on the School Building Assistance Program, if they're gonna limit, if they're gonna lift the cap on how much you can spend on a project, because they did limit, did they talk about that?
No.
So they're gonna give fifty more million, but that cap's still there.
Let me tell you, though, this room was standing only for Seventy Minutes, and I was one of the ones standing only, so trying, trying to write everything down. So fortunately, it is available on the, on the web app, you know, if you go out under the MASC conference. So it's probably worth looking at it. But the key is, it's not a revenue bill, so it's a commitment, but it's not a revenue bill. The only, the other topic that I did attend to was, it was called Building Community Partnerships to Support Student Wellness and Improve Educational Outcomes, and that was presented by Springfield School District. And that was an interesting session as well. They had a panel. But the thing I took away from that was, they have a lot of money they get. I mean, really, the community just gives them tons of money to invest in their wellness programs, which I was very impressed with. So I'd like to try to figure that one out, if we could really bring that back here, because they're the same type of community we are. Actually, they're probably for it, right, in Springfield?
Yeah, they're almost all funded by the state. I mean, when you get up to Pittsburgh...
No, but you gotta see the conscience, the glance that they're getting, and from companies, it's amazing, those partnerships. So I would like to try to see if, you know, we can look into that, because that's really important. You know, Nona said, you know, the kids have to be... Right, right. So those are my big takeaways. Great, thank you. Ron?
Well, I was there for the whole three days. I went to ten classes, two lunches, two general presentations, and I walked around looking at the vendors. The, there was two classes that were canceled. We're splitting the bond threat, that was canceled at the last minute. You have no mind, I was looking forward to that.
No, I thought that would have, I thought that would have been well-intended.
And then, then the other one that I wanted to go to was about making pathways to artificial intelligence in your school district. That was canceled. What the heck?
No, those are two good programs.
I gave it to my mind.
Maybe the instructors canceled?
Yeah, probably.
No.
So any takeaways for, just briefly, not all ten, but just the highlights?
The takeaway, the best one, well, there was two. The one that I happened to be in class with you.
Yes.
There was another class that Paula was in, so I got up and said to Paula, I'm going someplace else, because this way we can give people more time. The guy who spoke on diversity, referring to diversity in the 21st century, he came up with a tidbit, saying about how Nikki Haley was starting to warm up the chairs, and I said, what, why? So I started digging around. Apparently, the man in Washington is thinking of kicking Pence to the curb and bring Haley into vice president. That's why she's been going on making her book tour. So keep that in your back pocket and think about it a lot. The other thing is, I got these, I got this thing on data, student data privacy, and it was a real good class. I've been trying to get the thing off of the app. That's been my pet peeve. They give you this app to look at, and then there's some of those pieces that they have, you can't get it on there. You have to keep waiting and waiting, because as I was saying to Paula earlier, Paula and Chris, they had an example of four hundred and eighty-two apps that they got, they had to work with the companies to tell them that, you know, they weren't gonna process any information on the students. There was a hundred and five, I think, additional apps they weren't allowed to use, because every, every, whether it's students or adults, when they use the apps, the companies are watching your behavior.
Sure, stealing your information.
As soon as you check off, I agree.
Yeah.
And the student, and the students that keep on doing that, they get focused on the students. And so they had to sign a release sheet saying that they weren't gonna do it to the students. But there was a whole bunch of apps there that was just, it wasn't it. But there was a whole bunch of apps there that was just, it wasn't it. It was a 15-minute class. Before I knew the class was over and, you know, they were asking questions left and right and they couldn't keep up. It was a good anecdotal presentation, but it was eye-opening, you know. And then we went to that black time member for Sue and Claire. And the best, the best ones are always on Saturday mornings. If you ever get a chance for Saturday morning, Two Years In All Out: Outliers and Other Misbehaviors by Glenn Koocher and John Creed. It's really too bad they quit this on Saturday morning because I'm tired. If it was during the week, it would be cheap to jow people. They were just, it was really very eye-opening. And then Tracy with her thumbs up or thumbs down on social media. It's, it's really, it's stunning. It's stunning and stunning. And then I'm going to shut up. The last one was the School Committee Evaluation. And I've got five pieces in here, I got two in here on questions. She said she was going to refine the questions. She said for me to go on the website, MASC, because they're going to be changing some of the questions because some of them were complaining that it was too open-ended, the questions, you know. It was good. I, I enjoyed myself.
Great, thank you.
Even that little stop that they had in that class.
Yep, that's fun. Superintendent?
Sure, just really briefly. Between the five of us, which is a really nice showing for such a large conference, we saw something on safety, security, SEL, ethics, laws, funding, personnel issues. But the big overarching around alternative pathways really came down to the cultural resiliency and responsiveness. The keynote on Friday, Dr. Derek Gay was off the, he just was able to sum up an entire auditorium and engulf everyone. So we had a blast with Sue celebrating. We, I don't think that there was a class that we missed between all of us.
Good class, I can't believe.
Yeah, it was, it was very informative. The vendors there this year, they, they know we're there every year. So as soon as you walk in, they were trying to grab us and we have really good relationships across this forum. And Glenn Koocher and his team really supported our efforts as well. So it was a, it was a great conference this year.
It was good and I went to, obviously, a number, some people already talked about. There's some others and it was just very helpful. And it was something that I encourage all members to go in the future. And so we did have, I just wanted to, Sue had her presentation, which was really nice. And I just wanted to present this to Sue. And if you notice, we have the little guy in the picture too. So, and these are some, just reading the pictures of, of getting your thing. And there's a couple of Claire, you can give those to Claire. But we wanted you to have a memento of your board and her little guy, which people want to hear. So for anybody who needs a little, great, they were very cute.
This was the hit.
It was a giveaway from our, one of our attorneys.
The other, the other hit that I'd recommend, I think we talked about maybe that hopefully if we had some extra money, is to get this printer, they had this printer and you could send, you could send a picture from your phone to text it to them and they'd, they'd print out a poster.
It was gorgeous.
And we saw, you know, we thought of many, as we sat around talking at one of the breaks, we thought of many ways we could use that in the system to enhance student development, student development. Programs that we're going to offer, that we'd want to make a poster of, gifts that you could give to someone. And I think we each had a poster made of something pertinent to all of us.
Which was all part of the promotion, but it was wonderful, so.
Yep, good. Thank you, everyone. So we're going to go on to approval of the minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from November 4th.
Do I have a second? Any admissions, corrections, errors? If not, all those in favor, motion carries. We'll move on to subcommittee reports.
We have a finance subcommittee minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Make a motion to approve the finance subcommittee minutes of November 4th, 2019.
Okay, all right. Any questions, admissions, errors?
Just one thing, on the first page, next to that paragraph about the variable frequency drive rooftop units, it says that I pointed out that the units were necessary. I asked the question and Glenn pointed out. So I didn't want to take credit for something I didn't actually say. Other than that, they were fine.
All right, all those in favor?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, opposed, in motion carries. Now we'll move on to subcommittee reports. Michael, if you want to keep talking?
Finance Subcommittee met briefly this evening. My updates are that there are no updates, essentially. We have, we sent correspondence to the mayor's office about capital projects as we voted last time. We're still waiting a response on those. As of now, the Internet Service Bill has still not been paid.
So that's a serious concern.
Yes. And I, there's just no explanation for the whole of it.
Yes, you'll get a written explanation, please.
Well, so the time for that explanation was back when we were doing the process as far as I'm concerned, because it makes no sense to me.
Right, because we were doing this when we were told to do it.
Correct.
At this point, we are still waiting for, accounting for the indirect charges for 19 so that we can complete our end of year report. And we still have no response on the proposed indirect charges agreement.
For 19?
No, the agreement is for 4, we're for 20. Those are the two pieces that are left. Each year is part of the end of year report. We do our books, we've done those. But we have to have accounting for the indirect charges so they have the total for last year, so they have the total for net school spending.
I know he was waiting for a couple more to come in.
And then for the, the report also requires us to submit our current year budget along with the indirect charges agreement for this year with their verifying that our plan is to need net school spending for the current year. So those are the two pieces that are left. We need those two things for the survey.
Excellent, thank you, Mike. Policy Subcommittee, Isabel?
The Policy Subcommittee met very briefly this evening to go over our smoking policy. And we do have some tweaks regarding vaping. So we will bring that to the committee of the whole next time with our first reading.
Great, thank you. I read warrants.
Warrants. Make a motion that we approve the following warrants. Warrant 14 for $176,795.95. Warrant 15 for $3,501,738.54. Warrant 16 for $3,563,289.87. Warrant 17 for $2,269,893.79. Warrant 18 for $647,693.05. Warrant 19 for $2,292,492.59. And then from the grant and revolving funds, warrant 14 for $52,860.28. Warrant 15 for $148,802.48. Warrant 16 for $527,162.62. Warrant 17 for $174,759.07. Warrant 18 for $60,251.72. And warrant 19 for $282,594.59.
All right, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. We're going to move on to action items. We have a request about a field trip. We're asking that the committee approve an overnight field trip for Skills USA. This is their annual trip.
Motion approved?
Okay, any questions? All right, all those in favor? Motion carries.
Is this the email that we got today that you needed to have? Taking a straw poll kind of thing?
Yes, I have it under the little bill. And then we have the next one, approval to pay D bus service. On the action item?
Yeah. I'm not sure that we decided that that needed full school committee approval, but we received a bill from D bus service at the last minute, the last minute of the fifth year for transportation of.
Because the other company couldn't deliver. They couldn't, their pool couldn't do it.
It was a combination of, this was.
Homeless students.
It was very current.
And who we usually used couldn't do it. And so D bus got set up. And there was a lack of communication all around and shocking, shocking that it was wasted. Any case, the bill isn't paid. So finance recommended it be paid.
In the second paragraph of November 12th, it says that although the former director of pupil personnel instead approved the transports from D bus, his department did not receive a quote for the services or an invoice, invoice during the school year. And without a quote or invoice, a PO was never inputted into the new system.
Which, you're on Glenn's narrative or?
Yeah, November 12th. So I mean, I don't know how a bill is going to get paid if it doesn't have a, if it wasn't bid or quoted or there's no invoice or purchase order.
So, yeah, so that was, that was a question that I had in this very thing. Business office has been in contact with the city. Greg Cheffling specifically said that each student was under 10,000. And so that city would be able to pay this so we can proceed. We will see.
It has to be, you can't take each, each student. You can't, you can't do that.
That didn't make sense to me, but that's what we were told, so.
So we need a, we need a legal way to pay the bills.
So we've got, we've got an indication from comptroller's office that they think they can pay it. Maybe that's not really true. But that's, I have the same attitude as you just had.
I won't say a word.
But I, you know, this is the area of expertise, not mine.
So we need a way to pay the bills. So we leave this page open so I can take this up in the morning.
Is it called like emergency transportation or homeless?
Well, it's under the McKinney-Bentho, you know, and whatever it's called now, but that's.
You still have to get some sort of three quotes or three, I mean, you have to.
And I think they couldn't find defenders. I think the issue was the same with vendors.
I know, the state would have to, without a PO or a.
I mean, that was my first question. I wasn't sure that we should even look at it with the comptroller's office that we can't pay the bill and there's no reason talking about how to pay the bill.
But they were saying, yeah.
There's an indication from, from the comptroller's offices that we can. So we advise the school department to go ahead and pay it. And then if that turns out to be wrong, then.
A bond record is being in favor of that. If they can somehow never work it out, if it wasn't ever received, if that's the case, then that's fine. But typically, just so we keep repeating this, without a purchase order or a beating or a quote, it's against the law to pay the bill somewhere. But they did offer the services and they did deliver, so I guess, you know, we'll do what we can, right?
So you're in making motion for us to pay the bill with the understanding that we are working with the city around this?
Yeah, so I'll make that motion.
Nice, okay.
Do you have school tools?
No, transportation.
All right, all those in favor? Okay, thank you, motion carries. We're moving right along to new and old business. Superintendent, you wanted to talk about the field trip?
Yes, tomorrow we had, I had a straw poll this morning asking committee members to allow the use of up to a certain amount of money through the Kendall to take our students out to Springfield for the soccer game tomorrow evening. We have such an outpouring of participation and we have enough right now to fill two full buses. The game, soccer game starts at 7 o'clock. It's a very long ride on a bus.
It's not a really safe neighborhood heading than there for other sporting events that happen in the evening.
Right, and so students will try and to load into the cars. So I do have a straw poll vote of five. And I brought up the finance, so I would like permission from the school committee to approve the use of Kendall up to whatever we need to cover student safety to get out to Springfield tomorrow evening.
Just a little backstory, I had went out there to see a wrestling match and we had some car issues. And when we called AAA and then the police said, don't get out of your car, keep it locked, you know, but it was not a, a safe area for kids to be, you know, sort of meandering around the parking lot and things like that. So I.
I want safety.
Yeah, so can I have a motion?
I would just like for the motion to, to, to reflect that there, there is demand for students who otherwise might not be able to get there and leave public safety issues aside because I don't know and I don't want to vote on it. I don't want that to be part of the record.
Right, but that would be part of the motion.
I don't know that to be true. I, I have no clue.
So my, I don't know about the location, but the game starts at 7. Which means students will be driving in the dark from Springfield.
That's fine.
From that view, it was the strong feeling of the four of us in finance that it was definitely a good idea to put them on school buses to get them there and come home instead of having them all kind of drive in the dark.
Yeah, driving them in a pack.
So we felt that it would be appropriate to approve use of Kendall to fund buses to get students on.
When you spoke to the principal, did he think that he could get another bus full or?
He will check in the morning, but the first two buses are full, you know, that I've done.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we provide transportation through the Kendall Fund for these students to ride on buses out to this game. Second?
Sure.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor? Motion carries. Do we know if this game is being televised?
No, I don't think we usually televise from the way, especially soccer.
Football we pass.
No, soccer doesn't.
What's the school, what school are they playing?
Springfield High.
So they might, they might be telelinked. So you can just, maybe they can get a link, have somebody call Access TV. Maybe they can link it right over.
Our admin will be.
Or if they're doing it live streaming as well, we can tap right in.
Right. Anybody else have anything under new and old business?
I went to the international night at Francis Drake. It was mobbed, absolutely mobbed. 39 countries was rep, were represented.
Wonderful.
They had all kinds of food from all those different countries. So you could eat your way around the world. And then, and they had programs afterwards. And it's just, it just has grown. You know, the first time he did it, there, there weren't that many. And now it has grown to, to being very big, very large. And it was nice and hopefully, I'm sure it's going to happen again next year that all of you can go.
Perfect, thank you. Anybody else?
Don't forget the breakfast of the bands this weekend.
Very important, thank you very much. 8 o'clock.
And then of course, the Chicken Bowl is Friday night at Doyle Field. And then of course, the Thanksgiving game. Thanksgiving game, is it pigeon or chicken? I thought it was chicken.
Well, now they have pigeon, they have chicken.
Anyway, so it's Friday night before it used to be on Saturday. And so it's now Friday night. And then of course, the Thanksgiving game. And it's at Fitzpatrick High this year.
There's so much going on.
Yeah, so lots of stuff going on, parent teacher conferences as well.
Monday, Tuesday.
So hopefully all the parents out there will participate. It's very important to get an update on how your students are doing. Have some input. All right, with that being said.
Motion adjourned.
Second, all those in favor?
Happy Thanksgiving.
All right, thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.